Sure, we'll hear this from everybody and the district is so happy. It's well deserved and I don't think any of us could be any prouder to, to have him representing our school in this role, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up. Sorry if I stole anybody's thunder. I'll open it up to, online Kurt, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you, Chair, Madam Chair Watson. I was just thinking earlier, I don't know if I've ever got a chance to go first, or it's been a long time anyway, so.
Hang tight Kurt.
Maybe if he says something.
Test, testing?
Yeah, I see the.
Yeah. Should we have? Can we have someone else try? Oh.
Testing, testing? Anybody else hear me? Okay, I got some thumbs up from the others, okay.
We're just working to make you audible to the rest of the board.
I think it's the other one Tiffany, I don't know if that one's on. Okay Kurt.
Okay. Yeah, are we good?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, um, well, thank you, Madam Chair Watson. Appreciate the opportunity to be first on deck, so, thank you very much. And I would like to start with absolutely repeating what you said. Just shout out a big validation for this year's Oregon Superintendent of the Year selection. Couldn't think of a better choice and definitely well deserved, so congrats Brett again for me. It's an honor to work with you and to work with this district, so. Really, really sweet deal, so. I'd also like to give a shout out, thanks, to Aaron Santi for putting together a very focused and productive PLC, session this last week. Tuesday's time with our, putting our district-wide PLs, grade level PLCs together was absolutely fantastic. We're trying to re-energize our PLC work and Aaron just, got us on a great kickstart. It was, it was an awesome day, so thank you Aaron for that. And then just a big shout out to all of the OES staff for such enthusiasm and positive attitude this week. It's invigorating to be with such positive people and, makes you just want to get up and get to school and, and get working because they're just, they're just great people, so. I could talk forever, but I'm gonna stop there, Madam Watson, so, thank you very much board. I'm, and I'm out, so.
Do you mind picking someone else to go next?
Uh, you know what, means I threw a compliment out to Mr. Santi, I'll have Mr. Santi go if he was, has something he'd like to share.
Thanks Kurt, I've always got things I want to share. So yeah, I'm gonna open up with, recognizing Brent. It turns out I'm actually contractually obligated to, recognize him when he's given this kind of award. I didn't think he'd ever get it, so, I didn't really pay much attention to that clause in the contract, but now I do want to thank him and honor him. Great work Brent, and seriously, you know, he, you guys all know how much he did to deserve this award, so I won't go into it, but, it's a great honor for him and for our district. So, I just want to start off by saying that I'm in a new role this year and I'm excited to be doing it, as the administrator of our magnet programs and evaluation and assessment. And so to start, I want to talk about the Phoenix Talent Rising Academy, which is getting ready to kick off its first year as a standalone school in our district. Our enrollment is just about at 80 students. We have about 25 middle schoolers and, just a little bit right in the neighborhood of 50 elementary kids K to five. We're excited about that. We're located, our physical location is on the Phoenix Elementary campus, and we're gonna be preparing for our materials distribution and a family information night next Tuesday. Also, referring to what Kurt mentioned about our, in-service on Tuesday with our elementary staff, I want to thank all the elementary teachers. We have a really strong group of elementary teachers, very professional and very excited about, doing the hard work that it takes to be a data-driven staff, so. They were nothing but professional, did a great job, want to thank them for that. And then finally, I want to point out, if you haven't had a chance, the physical updates and upgrades to our outdoor discovery program building at Talon Elementary School. Our maintenance team and the contractors who did the HVAC and windows work have really got that thing looking great. The teachers are energized and I know that the, the families are excited too about that kind of renovated space, so. That's gonna look great the next time you get a chance to stop by. That is it for me, and I think I will turn it over to Mr. Valier.
Thanks boss, good evening Chair Watson and members of the board. I too would like to thank Brent for all his hard work, but also, good leaders do one thing well, and that's attract and retain great employees. And so I'd like to start off by thanking Jessica Hamlin for a great, strong start helping us, get our staff together and make sure that we have great teachers in every classroom. I'd also like to thank and recognize Lori LaMarche. She's our environmental science teacher over the summer. She applied for a grant from the Gray Family Foundation to buy tools. She's going to do an invasive species unit in that class and she needed a lot of tools, so she secured $3,300 for that. I want to recognize some staff members, Jordan Ruiz, Derek Rodman, and Jamar Boyd. Lisa's done a great job and taken some wonderful leadership in establishing our new reset room. It's a quiet supportive space designed to help students who are just kind of having a little bit of trouble that day. So that'll be a great space for our students at Talon Middle School. Next, I'd like to thank and recognize a few other staff members who headed up a staff wellness campaign the first couple of weeks of school, or the first week of in-service here. Julie Stinson has coordinated that, and I know Rich Hobbins has contributed, Marina Piacentini. They did a many hours of work doing various things inside the building. Coordinator in our luncheon, and Julie Stinson even taught professional development class on emotional development the other day, so she was great. So Lisa and I are very thankful for our great staff and the great things that are happening at Talon Middle School so far. And Shauna Schleif coming at you.
Thank you Ken, good evening Chair Watson and board, and again y'all echo what everybody says. On Monday when we saw these interesting people, can you hear me or am I laggy? You can, okay, good. When we saw these interesting people pop into the meeting, I was like, what is, what, what's Colquitt Guild doing at our meeting, you know? What's going on here? But yeah, I was, I was brought to tears with friends receiving of that award because I can't think of anybody more deserving Brent, so congratulations to you. I also want to give a big shout out to John and our maintenance department and all the construction crews that have done an amazing job of giving Phoenix Elementary a major facelift. And we've redone, if you haven't been in there, we've redone our primary wing and our annex, and it looks really amazing. And so just want to shout out John, Randy, Matt, Ronnie, Rob, Robert, Rich. I know I'm probably forgetting some, but those guys have been moving furniture left and right. Our gym was entirely full three days ago and now it is in classrooms and we have boxes everywhere. But when you come onto our campus, you wouldn't really notice that because you'll see people calm, happy, excited to be there. Our staff and teachers were really present at all of our meetings on Tuesday. And so, it's just an amazing place to be when you have people that are there, even you missed all the chaos. Really showing, showing a lot of radical calmness. I also want to give a shout out to Tiffany, the new science curriculum, teachers are jazzed for that, so thank you for leading that team. They were super excited to, to learn about the opportunities that, that curriculum's gonna help bring to our students. Finally, I want to share that our new coaches Pam and Rihanna Knapp, or Pam Ward and Rihanna Knapp, started a, a new teachers' club for any teacher that has been in the district for only three years, just as a way to kind of honor their transition and get them prepared and ready and supported. And so they met and had a luncheon today and it went really well. And so just lots of wonderful things are happening at Phoenix and we're just really excited to bring students back on campus starting next week, so. That's it from here. Heather, how about you share what's happening at Talon?
Absolutely. Turns out I do have the clause in my contract, Aaron. In all seriousness, we're all just so excited and so proud to work under Brent's, leadership and he is absolutely the best person to be receiving that, so congrats to you Brent. At Talon, there's just like super excitement and energy and a lot of hope around starting this year. It seems that people would think that like, oh, it's so challenging this year because the pandemic is, you know, in a kind of bad spot, but, it doesn't feel like that in the school. It feels really hopeful and exciting because we know what we're doing. We know how to keep kids and staff safe and really excited that everybody gets to come back in person full-time next week, so. Yay for that. I also want to recognize Bill and Angelo who are our custodians. Since the teachers came back this week, I swear, they have been running around like chickens with their heads cut off trying to really get, teachers what they need to feel ready for next week, so thanks to those guys. Also, want to recognize Cheryl and Alma in our front office. They've been navigating the pretty complex registration process with caring compassion, like the patience they have is amazing. And finally, I really want to formally welcome some of our new staff members who will be joining our Mustang family. Leonore Bugarine, she's our new ERC sped teacher. Corinne Calhoun, our new instructional coach. Zach Boyd-Helm, he's our new SEL and behavior specialist. Miguel Gutierrez, a new two-way immersion first grade teacher. Mackenzie Stewart, a new first grade teacher. Kim Sauerman, our media specialist, and then finally Spencer Courtwright. It's a lot of new staff members, but I wanted to introduce them to you and make sure that they're formally recognized and welcomed. And I cannot say enough about these guys, these amazing new employees, and it's amazing that we attracted such amazing people during nationwide hiring shortage across the industries. It's pretty, to me, a testament to why this is kind of the best place to work, especially in education. These guys are amazing and just really excited to get the year started with a, a great new crew and some of my old friends at TES. So that's it for me, and I will save the best for last, Toby.
That must be in your contract as well Heather. Board, great to see you guys. Toby Walker, Principal Phoenix High. Still want to echo what the rest of the crew said. Lots of great stuff happening. I'm on the pirate ship this week, but, got to recognize Brent, his leadership, his calmness. He probably didn't sleep all of September, October, November, maybe he got some sleep, I don't know, but, the work and heart and love that you put into this district does not go unnoticed, so congratulations on that award, well deserved. I'm on the pirate ship, it's great to welcome staff back and start planning for kids to be in this building. Speaking of being in this building, we've had a highly productive week because our staff have actually kind of got to settle into their classrooms. As you guys know, we didn't move into this building until December last year, and there were still boxes everywhere. I finally moved in my office, went through some boxes, found some treasures from Janie Hale that I finally threw to the dumpsters, so. Please don't share that with her, she would be hurt. But it's great to settle in, staff are feeling awesome, finally settled in, and that doesn't happen without our awesome custodial crew. Heather alluded to it, this is probably one of their busiest weeks of the year. If any of them ever called in sick this week, I don't know what I would do, I think maybe I'd do the same thing. But I want to recognize Alan Tappan, Mark Gardner, Manuel Barrera, and the new guy, Jim Redding, who is Anna Redding's husband, has joined our crew, so. I'm a little partial towards this crew, but I think we've got the best crew in the district. I'm very grateful for the work that they're doing, so. They do awesome work, professional, timely, positive, and they show pirate pride in every single thing that they do. We're really blessed to have them. Speaking of blessed, we have an amazing crew, Heather talked about it as well, promise we didn't share notes. The registration process, it has taken quite a few hands, Beverly Miles, Janet Gutridge, Maria Thompson, Yanath Garcia, and Myra Silva, the work they're doing to contact families, walk them through the registration process. It definitely would not happen without them, so really grateful for the work they're doing behind the scenes. So we're getting registrations, we're getting schedules, next comes the B word, buses, so. Christie Sanders is a jack-of-all-trades behind the scenes, helping coordinate with first student to get these bus routes out, so. Grateful for that work to get our kids here to school on time safely, so we're ready to roll, so. The pirate ship is officially ready for students to board, and we're excited that you guys are here as well. It's gonna be a great year. That's it from the ship.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a cent rate deposit?
I do Madam Chair. I just wanted to say how grateful we are for the staff, well, the district. You know, we have been, my guys have worked so hard to get PES moved in and try to keep things afloat, and I know that, that across the district, I've had to make calls, hey, we're definitely gonna get there. Just be a little patient, we want to make sure that we're ready for the kids in the areas that need special help. And everybody has been wonderful, and Shauna's staff, coming back into basically a room full of boxes in the middle, are so positive and upbeat. I have not heard one complaint. I have not, you know, everybody's just been grateful and thrilled to have the kids back, and, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Have we fixed the audio now? Does Tiffany need to keep holding that or have we fixed it? Oh, we still can't, okay. All right, got it. Sorry.
Any, anyone else in the room before I move on? Okay, hearing none, we will open it to citizens' comments. Um, let's see, this is an old one, so bear with me. As a reminder, I wish, if you wish to speak in citizens' comments, please sign in if you haven't already in the chat. The meetings are, the board and director meeting are in public versus a public meeting. Any comments from those joining us will become under public meeting law. Comments will only be heard during the allotted time on the agenda and must be limited to three minutes within the 30-minute total for all comments. Please do not expect the board to respond to comments. At this time, the board cannot hear in-public complaints directed toward an employee. Those complaints should be presented to the employee's immediate supervisor in person and writing. So, when, I will have staff help me, and I will call your name, please state your name and your address, and if you're associated with an organization. You can also submit written comments and send them to Denise, our board secretary. And that is it. Has anyone signed up for board comment? Oh, I think. Chrisla is just, I think we're ready for you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks guys, and congratulations Brent, good job. I just had sent the email out to the board earlier this evening, and I'm asking for a bit of a change to the policy that regards the teaching of controversial subjects in the classroom. The policy seems to say that teachers need to come to a principal in order to get approval to teach a controversial subject. But what I'd like to see, when I wrote in the emails, I'd like to see a change regarding the studying of the controversial issue. It's very important and absolutely necessary that parents be notified in advance that the controversial issues are being studied in the children's classroom. So I'd like to see is a simple sentence, a couple sentences after the policy, which says that after the controversial topic is approved by the principal, the teacher will notify the parents about the plan to study the controversial issue and provide the parents with a copy of the associated instructional materials at least seven days in advance before beginning the study of that controversial issue. Last year, we had an issue with a teacher going off of some very controversial material. My child came home, eyes were wide open, you wouldn't believe what happened today in the classroom. And the administration and the principal is very accommodating to me regarding meeting with me and talking about the subject matter. But I think it's very important that, number one, the teachers definitely go to the principal for approval. Number two, before it's taught, the parents are notified. And I'd like to see that agendized, and that was my comments for the evening, and I appreciate your service board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comments. We'll go to the superintendent report.
Thank you Madam Chair Watson, and thank you so much just for the kind words and appreciation. This is the best district to be a part of and a lot to do with board sitting up here and the people you see on the screen and definitely the students and staff and families and community we serve, so. Just very grateful, honored, humbled, and it is our time. It'll be nice to showcase our district and how we've overcame such a tragic event along with navigating through a pandemic. So I'm excited to share that with others across the state. I know also that that's not easy. It takes time and resources and organization to just nominate. And so Tiffany Lambert, thank you so much for that organization, everything you've done for, for this district and, and that nomination, so thank you. You heard from our staff and administrators out there. We felt the excitement leading up to this week, and then you heard a lot of what's happening in our buildings right now, and there is a great energy. You also heard the tremendous intentional support that, that's available to staff and that the, we're putting in place to make sure that staff feel confident and capable of doing a tough job. You know, this, our career choice is becoming, you know, challenging at times, and we want to make sure that our new staff and even our current staff know that it's the best profession in the world, so thank you to the administrators that continue to provide that support. Also, wanted to shout out to the tech department and maintenance and custodial. They, you heard they're doing a tremendous job. Technology and work requests, maintenance work requests are coming in, and they're basically committed, if, if it needs to happen for students to come in and be successful next week, we'll prioritize it. If not, we will get to it when we can, and staff are definitely understand that, so. I will tell you that John and I were walking over through Phoenix Elementary, and I think we were the only two freaking out. The staff was great, you heard Sean is just talking about that they're just going with the flow, it'll get done, lot of helping hands on deck and, but it, it is a big project that's gonna be serving Phoenix Elementary for years to come, and just love seeing the smiles on the staff face as you walk through there. In your blue folders, you have a safe return to schools document. It's the in-person instruction and continuity of service plan. Again, thank you Tiffany and Carrie and team for putting that together, and that's what a requirement to start in-person learning, and that's what we're first and foremost excited about, full-time in-person learning starting next week. Want to also mention our K-12 music program that's been adjusted a little bit. We have some funds through our student investment count to provide well-rounded education and include some of the things that we've been missing in this district. We have secured a great music teacher for full-time at the middle school. So we're really excited to have that program be full-time there. Mike DeRose, who's been splitting duty at the high school and the middle school, will be recruiting fifth graders to play instruments and have a band program at the element, all three elementary, so. Thank you for that coordination and cooperation with the elementaries and Mike's willingness to really build that music program from the start, at fifth grade there with the instruments. In addition, we have, we have a elementary music position open, two of them, and we haven't been successful in filling those yet, so we're looking at partnerships with community partners to provide K-5 music, and we have Rogue World Music that is proposing to provide that service for us, and so we're really excited what really established the K-12 music program. Also in your blue folders, you have a parent observation form that we will be getting out and sharing with our, our families. At the last meeting, you should, heard that parents would like to be visiting classrooms, which we welcome, and we have a process that we can follow to, to do that, so we will share that with families as well. And then finally, we're coming up on the year anniversary of the Alameda fire. We have an event that Tiffany has been spearheading with the Manzanita Project on September 7th. We would like you to join us at 1:00 PM at Blue Heron Park to share what the kids worked on this summer, and it's just really exciting to be able to commemorate that, and it'll be mainly our kids and our staff, but would love to have the board there as well. Also, as you know, we had $2 million plus donated to our fire relief fund. We have a letter generated that we're gonna send an update to all of those people that donated to that fund to share the hope that's going on a year later after the Alameda fire, and I'll send that letter to you electronically, so you can see it, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for your hard work. Next is a consent agenda. Approving the revised agenda, approving the minutes for 8:521 and the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you Rick.
I'll second.
Thank you Rick, thank you Sarah. Any discussion? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Moving on to action items, board policy, IIABB use of feature films or videos or other media.
Yeah, this was an administrative rule for our district, and we feel it's time to actually make it policy, so it's clear to our public, it's clear to our staff on what is allowable to show and the process to be able to do that.
Any questions on it?
I move the board adopt policy IIABB as presented.
I second it.
Thank you Ma, thank you Michael, and thank you Polly, sorry I can't talk today. We'll take it to a vote Sarah.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Policy passes. Now board policy IIABB AR, the use of featured films or videos or other media.
Yeah, I actually bespoke, this was an administrative memo within our district, but this is the administrative rule. And the reason we need to adopt this is it's because it's a new AR. Boards do not always have to adopt ARs, but since it's a new one, that's the process that will follow.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion or any, first of all, do I have any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate what Brent just covered, because ARs, we normally don't approve them. But if they're new, then we do, that's the.
Yeah, and we have another one down in the information discussion we're considering, yeah. Yeah, so that, I wanted to clarify that. There are certain by statute, ARs that need to be board approved, but what these don't necessarily, but if it's a new policy to the district, especially because it's an optional policy in general, then they have to be approved.
And you say there are others as well.
If, well, we have another one down that we're, it will be a new AR to us as well, that wouldn't necessarily need board approval, so. That question has come up before on why we're approving a lot of the ARs, it's just if it's a new policy or required by statute.
Thank you.
I move the board adopt AR policy IIABB AR as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you Michael, thank you Rick. I will take it to a vote Sarah.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Our last agenda item is board policy GBCB, staff conduct. Our last agenda item is board policy GBCB, staff conduct.
Yeah, this clarifies, aligns the policy with our personnel handbook and just a few changes that actually include all staff. And then clarifies Phoenix talent employees, minor changes, but clarifies it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I move the board approves staff recommended changes to policy GBCB as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Michael. I'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. We are scheduled for recess. I'm guessing we do not need one at this point. We will move on to information discussion, facilities and bond update. Oh.
John, hang tight real quick. We'll get the microphone coming up here. All right.
Okay, well, as we talked about, I'm sorry, good evening, board. John McHaleb, Director of Facilities. As we mentioned earlier, the primary and secondary, we've been working really hard on moving the stuff back, staff back in. And the seismic remodel has come out beautiful, and it will provide a much safer and improved learning environment. So I'm really excited about the way it's come out. The cafeteria is now started, and we're hoping to finish that mid to somewhere around mid-October, definitely by the end of October. PHS, as of today, the auxiliary gym and wrestling room are cleared for use, oh, as well as the boys' football locker room. And the large gym will be cleared next week. They're actually installing the new bleachers right now, so that's what the holdup is on that. I don't know if you got a chance to see the multipurpose field when you were driving by, but it looks beautiful. And more of a lot of that, a lot of the construction fencing will go away to prepare for students' return. So the bus loop will be operational and everything for next week. Oh, ODP's building, all of the improvements we made, new roof, new HVAC, new flooring, painted the interior, exterior windows, that's all done. And, and the staff are moved back in and by all reports are thrilled with their new environment. Brett had asked me also to talk a little bit about the PPE and our preparation for coming back to school. I will say that one of the struggles we've had is warehouse space. But that is partially due to the fact that we've probably got about 35% of it full of masks and disinfectant wipes. And I mean, we stocked up. So hopefully COVID doesn't last forever, but I, I think we may be prepared. And we've, I've been reaching out to staff and giving them avenues to request all of the PPE that we've collected. So I think that when kids come back, we have definitely done our best to provide a safe environment for their learning, for, for both, for both the students and the staff. As far as safety, you know, I think you may know that I took on some additional duties this, this year and have been diving into that and working on learning some of the process, processes, but also improving them. And I look forward to in the coming months, being able to tell you about some of the new changes that, that I'm hoping to do. And that is my report for today. Do you have any questions?
I'll save my question for information discussion about the new facility use.
Yes. Did you want me to talk to that a bit?
Say it again, John.
I'm sorry, did you want me to talk about that a bit, explain the new facility use?
Yeah, when we get to that line item, we'll do that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought that was a question.
I was preparing for my question. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the financial update.
Hello, everybody.
Jasmine Carabinas on, yeah.
Hi, good evening, board. I'm Yasmin Carabinas, Director of Accounting. I hope you have the financial report in front of you, and I'm just gonna go over some highlights that I have here in front of me. So the first section is on the general fund. The projected amount on the last column reflects the state school fund estimate that we most recently have for 2122. The funding was calculated with an ADM from 2021. I wanted to show you the adapted budget column calculated with 3,233 ADMs, which is the ADM from 1920. So the difference between the two columns, I just wanted to show you side by side, is about $2.2 million. We are hopeful that the House Bill 2630 will pass on the next legislative session. So hopefully we'll have this additional funding, because we'll need it. Now, for the capital projects fund or the bond fund, the TMS HVAC upgrade that was finished during 2021 was approved in July to be reimbursed with awesome grant monies. And it does the bond matching money that we received, so the full $4 million has been spent. I'm also showing an estimated ending fund balance for 2122 of, let me see, of $2.27 million because of some seismic projects that were postponed until 2023. I believe it's for elementary school and town middle school. Is that right, John? Okay. And this is, this was due to the rising costs that we have for materials, for construction materials. Next, the construction excise fund. I'm showing an ending fund balance for 2122 of about $135,000. And this is due to some projects that were pushed from 2021 to 2022. Now, let's see, let's go to Senate Bill 1149 Fund, which is the Energy Savings Fund. So real quick, I'm gonna go over for this fund. I have additional information if you would like me to send it to you. And this is mainly for the new board members. A lot of people don't know what the construction excise tax money is for. So anyway, sorry, I think I skipped, that was construction excess money. But for the SB 1149, which is the Energy Savings Grant, this has been fully spent at this point. Some of the bond projects that were reimbursed with SB 1149 in 2021 where exceeded the available balance then. So there is a receivable recorded at the end of 2021 of about $86,000. So all the revenue that we're gonna receive this year will be applied towards that available amount, that receivable amount. And that, I think that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I just have a couple more comments. And just with, I think you have heard it many times, especially with the bond and even with other funding, just leveraging all the funding to maximize our projects. And John and Jasmine work really closely together with the construction excise tax, SB 1149, to make sure that directed towards the right projects and extends the dollar, really. I will also share that, I think a couple weeks ago, maybe it was last week, the revenue forecast came out for the state of Oregon, which continues to be positive, which continues to be good news. And so that is something that we can continue to hope for, some big, some opportunities. So we can continue to be funded at full level. And I don't want a month to go by to, that we don't mention the February session and making sure that we continue to speak to our legislative reps to share that that's more vital than ever. Hundred percent supported, doesn't seem to be an issue, but just want to remind people of that.
Good idea. Any other questions? Legislative OSBA update, I'm gonna try to go fast, but I apologize, there's been a lot that's happened in August and with only having one meeting. First of all, you may have all gotten an email about LPC, which is Legislative Policy Committee, which each region has a representative for that region. And the current hold, we actually do not have a current holder of this position. It was Diane from Eagle Point, and she resigned from the Eagle Point Board at the end of July. So currently, this position is open. OSBA felt that it could stay open until the election. The Board of Directors person, usually there's two people on LPC, the LPC person and the Board of Directors, which is me for this region. So then I will just be covering that spot until we vote for somebody. So what happens for those that need a reminder or don't know yet? If someone from this board would like to be LPC, then the board will nominate that person. If there's no one, then we don't need to nominate anyone. And then the nominations have to be in by October. And then after around October 15th, we will get a submission of all the people that have been nominated, and then we will vote on that, and then majority wins. And then they will be elect sworn in in January, I believe. So if you have any questions or think you might want to do it, I was LPC for four years, and I can probably answer all your questions, but there's some great detail on the website as well. Okay, so next is OSBA Fall Legislation. They're having a webinar on September 15th at two, I mean, at 12:00, and September 16th at 5:00. The 16th is our board meeting. And then also they're having a, I have it up here, now it's gone. It was a board rules and responsible, roles and responsibilities on the 15th as well at 12:00. And so I can't, Sarah nicely said, hey, there's two meetings I want to go to. So I contacted Steve Kelly from OSBA and said, hey, we have a conflict. We have a board meeting that night, so we can't go. And he suggested that the newer members, if they were trying to decide, go to the board rules and responsibilities, and the members that have been board members for a while, choose that as a recorded session. And if they wanted to use that as their, I forgot what it's called, where you get, yeah, your leadership points, then you can let him and his office know, and then watch the legislative update. I have noticed I got an email, like almost a month ago, talking about our Fall Regionals, which is usually covered a lot of policy. And I emailed them today and asked, are we still having that? So I didn't get a response back from OSBA, but as soon as I do, I'll let you know. Because if we are having the regionals, then I would say a lot of that's going to be duplicated. So, and you might not need to go to both if we're still having the Southern Oregon Regionals, which was, that is dated on October 28th.
Oh, I was thinking that the 15th one was the regional, so that was my.
It's not. It's a legislate, but I'm not sure the regional was set for in-person. And I haven't heard if, I'm assuming OSBA has now moved back to not doing in-person because they had set up travel. And so I was informed because I was supposed to be there as the representative of the region. So I do not know if they're going to do, continue for that date or do online, and I'm waiting back to hear from that. So that may, that may, yeah, make your. Then next is, you should have gotten, speaking about legislation, is OSB and COSA sent out, I think it was a couple weeks ago, the legislation report that breaks down all the policies related to school boards. And if you have questions, you can ask me, or you can contact Richard Laurie at OSBA. The annual convention is coming up, November 11th and 13th. This year it will be in Salem. I sure hope it's in-person, because we can celebrate Brent's Superintendent of the Year, and that would be really special. They have not opened, I spoke to Denise, she's been lovely and coordinating, they have not opened the hotel rooms yet. So if you have a special request for a hotel room, then please let her know right away. I had, when I was at Pace, there was talk about it at my table for one of the meals. And the hotel room shortage is a real thing this year, and there's no close hotel rooms to the convention center. So if their backup, if you can't stay on site, is over by Costco. And so it's quite a drive. I believe we get first pick. So Denise is on it and ready to rock and roll, so we can get, get a spot. But if you have any special accommodations you need for a room, please let Denise know as soon as possible. I also took the board chair webinar and learned a lot about that. And I will probably talk about some of that in our board retreat. But the last 12 minutes of that, they've changed this year, and it was about disruptive meetings and how to crowd control and different ideas on how to make sure your meetings run smoothly when you have a room full of, of people in the room. And they had some really good tips. Calling point of order was one of them, so we might want to brush up on how that works, and I can talk to you about that. They've covered a lot. I was also on a meeting with OSBA Board of Directors, the OSB Co-Orchocass and some board members in hotspots. Got an opportunity to talk to the governor right after she had the mask mandate. I don't, it was right after the vaccine one as well. Her top priority is still opening the schools. Yeah, safely in person, she wants in person, and her plan is right now for local control in person. I spoke and said, my concern is we're in a hotspot county, and it would be really nice if a district was managing their numbers nicely, not to just blanket shut down all the schools in that county, to look more at the data and how things were being run, because it was so important for kids to be in school. And she agreed that it was really important for kids to be in school. She didn't agree on my idea, but she agreed that just having kids not be in school was not a, not a good idea. People up north, their main concerns were safety, and then they were advocating for more funding for safety at their school board meetings. That is something that I don't see down here as much. And then they are slowly putting out, I don't know if you guys saw, there's FAQ that OSBA put out about the new vaccine. Jim Green sent it out, so I believe every school board member, I have the link if you don't, and it's very informative. And will answer probably every question you have about the new vaccine mandate. That is all. Sorry, it was so long. There was so much going on. Any questions for me before I move on? Okay, the Alameda fire update.
Yeah, before we get into the, may I request that, if it's appropriate, that our team members can sign off and head to their families, Madam Chair?
I was going to do that, but then I wanted to ask one clarifying question before I do that. And please, some of you guys, I'm glad you're distant, you can't throw anything at me. I know Sarah may have some questions for John, and we may have some questions for Toby when we get to the representatives. to the school board. So I was wondering if we should just make it fair and let them go after nine or let, make just those two stay and the rest go. That was, or we can move them up to right now.
We could move them up.
Do I have a, do we need a motion? Yeah, okay. So we'll move that up. Are you ready to answer questions? John, we'll move up the board policy.
Oh, yes, it's the community suggested facility. John, I just have a quick question. I saw your form for the fee schedule and I just wondered if that was comparative to what other schools in our region do as far as fee schedule for outside event, outside vendors or outside groups using the facility.
It is, it's actually, I compared it with Medford. Their last update was three years ago. Some of the prices are based on the labor to set things up. Like for stages, it, it takes a couple of hours to set one up and then take it back down. So it was to cover district costs as well as a little bit for the equipment usage. Because eventually we have to do repairs, make, you know, replace equipment, stuff like that. Which as you can see by the form and the spreadsheet, that money, you know, those charges aren't for stuff that benefits our students. It's for outside vendors, those charges. So it's so that we don't take away from our kids, from our, our students to support those outside activities.
I had a feeling I'm going to be the answer, but I just thought I would ask. And then this is kind of a outside question, but since you're going to take the fence down soon for the multipurpose field here on the front on Rose, right, or the construction fence, right, it's coming down. So more people will be able to be there, yes?
Well, so when I talked about removing the fences, for right now, that is the fences in the bus loop. We're still going to keep the multipurpose field fenced off until the grass is strong enough to support the public being on it. I will have to check with the contractor, but I suspect we're looking at at least another month before we'll feel comfortable with that. We're also going to have, you know, siding going on, on the building, things like that. So we just have to keep that side of the building safe with the construction, the remaining construction going on. And then, like I said, just protect that grass until we're certain that it's strong enough.
So with the facility, I guess, getting more complete or fully completed. So when we did the Turfathon for, I mean, we talked a lot about twenty seven, twenty four seven, three sixty five type of use of that field. And I think there's been some questions from the community about if that will be accessible for them off school hours to walk or run or.
Honestly, that is.
The twenty four seven, but it'll be three sixty five days a year. We'll have to have our security and on campus thing, so it won't be necessarily up to the public. There'll be public hours that we will be able to do that, but not during the school hours because that's a learning space for.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just meant off school time. Will the public have access to off of event?
Yeah, we'll, we'll see a policy and some timing for that and make sure that's shared.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm the board chair and I should not be confused, but I am confused. So do we want to do, are those the only questions we're going to have for John and then move it to Toby and then talk about these policies again? Because I do have some questions, but they weren't for John.
Oh, those were my question, that was my question for John about this policy.
Okay, so we'll talk about the rest of the policy later. Do we need to ask Toby any questions about board representative? Do we jump right into that right now?
Yeah, basically I talked to Mr. Walker and, and shared the tentative plan because I think the board wants to discuss that in the retreat to really kind of get a solid process. So we can share with students and the staff understands the process of selecting. So if we do that on the twenty fifth, we can bring that back and share that with Mr. Walker and his team to start advertising that. And then have student representatives selected by the second meeting in October, which is typically one meeting later than we do anyway. We'll also have to talk about the in-person day meeting at the high school as we get closer to it, to see if that's going to be an option. Toby, does that sound like a fair plan?
No, Brent, I think that sounds wonderful. I think that's perfect timing for what we have right now.
Okay, any questions for Toby about?
That answers all my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, you guys can all be excused. If you want to stay, you can. But we know you have had a hard, busy week and looking for more hard busy weeks when the students come in. So please take the time off if you would like. And thank you so much for joining us. Okay, I will move to the Almeida Fire.
Yeah, thank you board for accommodating that. Really, I think I will tell you the long range facility group or a long range recovery group has selected an executive director for our region. So we will be introduced to that person here soon. And that will really coordinate efforts moving forward. There's a lot of hope out there. As you drive up Cheryl Lane, there's apartments there that are going to be available. We have our three FEMA residents that are going to be fully moved into hopefully by the end of the summer with Coleman Creek being the, the last site. And then Gateway Project is still scheduled for mid-October to be completed. So along with other opportunities for low income housing and houses being built in the fire affected area. So that's all I have. We will continue to kind of participate in those region-wide meetings and hopefully have some more information next meeting.
Thank you.
I have nothing to add to that wonderful report.
Thank you very much. Next, diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yeah, we've met with that last week or a couple of weeks ago with our team that has been really accomplished a lot. I kind of highlighted that in my welcome back speech. We had two goals essentially is to have policy and process to recruit and retain staff, a diverse staff, and we did that. And then we also highlighted some other things that we accomplished. One being translation services at events with those devices, which is great. We have a new framework. We're looking for two co-facilitators for our district. It's going to be a stipend position. We put that application out last week and they're starting to roll in. We will select those mid to late September and then establish our co-facilitators and then have a meeting to kind of generate goals for the year. So excited about that. There seems to be a lot of energy. And to continue the work from last year.
Did anyone attend the conference that was, I think it was by ESD?
Yeah, we had three or four staff members that attended that.
You don't have to share if you don't want to, Tiffany. While she's coming up to the mic, just a reminder that Eva with the Ashland School Board, she sent out a thing. I think I sent it out to everybody about having a equity diversity training for school board members. And she's still working on that and they may not have twenty five people, but she still believes that it's important to have. Definitely, it sounds like mostly it's her district and a lot of our district, but she's working with that to put that together.
Thank you. Yes, the Equity Conference by the ESD was virtual and in person. I think the most special thing of attending was our team that attended personalized coaching with Dr. Map's group about family engagement. So they really looked at our attendance handbook and our family engagement plan and gave us some really good advice to increase family engagement and participation in the school process. So Tracy Koah is our new family engagement specialist. She's also our attendance specialist and she has a team in the school buildings. So our first start is how we communicate with parents when kids aren't coming to school. Because that's our first indicator that they might not be engaged in the educational process. So instead of just calling to say like, where's your kid? Why are they absent? It's really checking in on what barriers are there that are preventing your child from coming to school. The transportation, is it food, is it clothing? And so we have a team at the schools that are going to be addressing those barriers and really communicating with our parents in respectful ways. A lot of parents might not feel safe in a school environment if they didn't have a good school experience themselves. So we're really excited to, to start that work in our equity process of making sure we have culturally relevant and flexible practices that include all of our families and everybody feels welcome in the school environment.
Thank you, that sounds amazing. Anything else? Okay, moving on to review the Personnel Policies Handbook.
This has been updated and I just want to commend Jessica Hamlin, who really worked with her team to update this. It added the policies that we felt needed to be in this handbook because they're relevant right now. And it puts it on the forefront of our staff members as they enter our district and continue to serve in our district. So that is for your review and we'll be on production next time.
Any questions or comments?
Got a comment. On page four, the guiding principles that are listed there, my question is, where did those come from?
Those are from our website. They are not the board's guiding principles, but we could include some of those if you wanted to.
No, I wasn't necessarily looking for that, I just wondering.
Yeah, Jessica, do you want to address that or that's what we've had on our website for quite a while? They're directly from that work when we did the strategic planning five years ago.
And second thing I wanted to ask about is the, oh, for example, on page ten, there's a policy code there and you mentioned that you've added the codes. But are, it's not verbatim to our existing policy or do you want it to be verbatim? And like that particular one is being considered right now. But there are others throughout the handbook, I'd say.
Yeah, I'll have Jessica Hamlin address that too.
In the section where we were introducing the policies, we explained that this was not an exhaustive list of our school board policies. We referred staff members to the website so that they could have access and be knowledgeable of all of our policies. And we also acknowledged that in some cases, these were summaries of our policies, but that we wanted to bring these to their attention at this time. But we certainly could add all of them in full if you want.
No, that's fine.
I would say my only suggestion, it looks awesome, would be that you have a hyperlink to the policies. But maybe if you had it hyperlink to each policy next to it, might be helpful for them. So they're not trying to navigate through, because after third policy, they might go, okay, I'm done. Sarah?
I just thought it was interesting on page eight, under district regulations, that all personal telephone calls should be made during break. Long distance calls should be billed to your home phone. And I'm not even sure, I think I did that at one point. I knew how to do that, but I'm not even sure. It serves as a reminder of, oh yeah, it used to be where there were certain times, right, where it was, anyway. I didn't know if that was still relevant, but I mean.
I actually thought about that too. Probably should update that language.
It's the same reason we have the fax in the July meeting for some reason.
Great job, thank you. And I love that it's pictures of our, of our people.
Yeah, we knew that was important. It is important.
Okay, moving on to the Budget Committee applications in your packet, there was two applications. Has there been any more? There's been no more. We have three spots opening. So, Michael, did you have a question?
Maybe how many spots?
So there will be one more and I believe they have time to apply because we will be looking at their applications at the next meeting. Am I correct on that understanding?
So we have one opening remaining for the Budget Committee. And thank you to Laura and Dwayne for reapplying. We very much appreciate it.
Yes, they're amazing. Any other questions about the Budget Committee applications? Okay, budget calendar for review twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Yeah, this calendar is reflective of a normal budget year calendar, which we're hopeful for. It is not a full session, so I feel like these dates will be pretty solid and it's very, it matches up to what we've done in the past.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing them, we will go to, we already covered the student representative to the board. I don't think we need to do that again. Declaration of surplus items.
Yeah, we have some older Chromebooks that we would like to declare surplus. And when you declare surplus, you can have public auction or you can partner with a nonprofit. And we're looking to partner if the board approves this surplus with Talent Maker City to help distribute to our families. And they are really excited about it. We will have to house them because they are, don't have a lot of storage there. But we can get these out to kids and families to be able to utilize because they're still functional and can access, have some technology in their hands.
Any questions? Okay, hearing them, we'll move on to the Community Listening Session. Do you want to start off on it?
Go ahead.
Oh my gosh, I'm not super prepared. I am sort of. But the Community Listening Session is, I just drew a blank, the fourteenth at five thirty to six thirty. Brent and I have been talking to Janet from OSBA that's going to help. I guess I had something, she's recommending some things. I had envisioned a more open speaking community listening session. It's been highly advised not to do it that way. As you can see, from that discussion came our board policies about public comment. And so some of those need to be changed. So the, right now, we're going to be starting the meeting off with the board's responsibilities and the roles and when to contact the board and how to expect the board will answer. Those kind of things. And then we will cover the main topics, critical race theory, mass. And then she will ask some community engagement questions. And let me see if I have, I had them up. Let me see if I can find them. If not, I can email them to you. But they're basic ones that she has asked the, the other communities as well. I'm not seeing the questions. I apologize for that.
And I might add, she's been doing this around the state and it, and it'll be a virtual format then too. But, and it's been good for communities and board. I mean, we, we learned, we had an hour meeting with her and, and learned some things about, you know, the, the responsibilities, the actual, you know, requirements and what citizens' comments is appropriate to, to do and engage and what is not. So I think it'll be very. So I think it'll be very good education for the whole board and our community and our staff. Along with continuing to engage our community. You know, in a process to find ways to answer questions in a, in a manner that's efficient and, you know, work for everybody.
Agreed. And I, and she will be sending us some survey results and data results afterwards. And it may be something I have a feeling we'll probably contact her for more information because we may have more questions than answers at that, but that's okay. It's a great way to open the door and, and learn and make, make some policies ours. And make sure that we have everything in place for structure so that we're, everyone knows what to expect and we're fair and equal. I did find the questions currently, what is working well for you? And what would you like to be improved for all the students in Phoenix Talent School District? And what do you think students need to thrive at the Phoenix County School District? And then if time, she would open it to other comments. And then we would get that information. She'll be taking notes behind the scenes. She'll give us some information. And this will be great timing because it's right before our board retreats, so we can discuss that and some other things that probably will pop up that I can't even think of at this point. But like Brent said, I learned so much in that conversation with her. It was like almost an hour. It was like, holy smokes, where have you been my whole life? I had the questions for you a long time ago. So thank you so much, Sarah, for suggesting contacting her. So far, it's been a great, great experience and I can't wait to see more.
So is it all virtual? So will, will all plug in virtually? Or will we be like a board meeting where the public will be virtual? How, what's the format?
We can discuss that. I mean, we can do it like this and have the virtual, come, everybody come in virtually or all come in virtually. So I'd leave that up to you.
I would suggest we just do it exclusively virtually and that's because of the time that it takes. Carolina was going to use the library today and had to be booted out because the custodians had to set it up and it takes them an hour to set it up. And staff that's here late and, you know, setting up all the audio equipment and the name tags and all of that stuff. If we're not accommodating the public in person, I would suggest that we just have it virtually. Just my suggestion.
I'd like to ask a question. I'm wondering how we're making this known to, to our district and our parents and our students if they would like to speak. How are we publicizing this and how are we going to generate that buzz that we need to get people involved?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's something that Janet asked as well. So we'll use, after tonight, we'll use our communication venues and social media. And, you know, there's, there's some families that sometimes like a little flyer in the backpack of their elementary students. So we'll try to get as many ways to say that this is an event that's happening. It is one hour for this one. I anticipate that this is something that the board may want to do a few times throughout the year. At 6:30, there is a town hall on the Almeida Fire with a lot of agencies presenting the updates, which was our school district being one, so.
And we also talked about community partners helping us get, spread the word out as well. And our, our parent clubs like PTA and there's one at Phoenix Elementary that's a Spanish speaking family and, and spreading the word out that way with our community partners in our school clubs and stuff.
I would also suggest we, I mean, this might just be semantics, but I think semantics matter often. I would suggest we change the name of the session to better reflect how it's going to unfold. It's more of a community engagement session with the, with the school board, it sounds like. Because there's some education there. And I guess there is some listening there with the two prompted questions, but.
I don't really know how much we're getting to engage. We're really just listening more than we're actually able to respond and actually engage, so.
That's true. I'm just meaning, you know, if we're going to be going through, you know, the, the initial, here's how the board works and how the, there's going to be some education there. So I just want to make sure we're setting the right expectation for our guests. And if they, if listening still accomplishes that, great, but just a thought.
I, I think the agenda may clarify some of that too. So if we can post some of that. But I understand what you're saying. We had that same discussion when we met with Janet on what it actually is and don't want to create some, an expectation that's not going to be there just by the title of the event.
Right.
Yeah, that was one of our big concerns. And, and again, Brent said she's had these throughout the state and, and guaranteed that listening was an okay word to use. Everybody will be listening. Everyone will be listening, hopefully. But it is an education, especially the first one, I think it's going to be heavily educated to the public. And I think she suggested when we do them in the future, then you would pick a topic and then you would also open up. So I don't know if we can change the name if you have something off the top of your head. But she said, said listening was fine and, and just the way, as long as we're thoughtful of the way we promote it, which I'm sure staff will be, then I think we'll be fine with that.
Okay, great.
And she'd be covering a lot of the questions on why, why the board members aren't commenting and all of that. And she had some great suggestions because I asked her a ton of questions and she had some really good suggestions for, that we'll, that we'll bring up at a later time of, you know, how to communicate and why can't we? Because I was like, well, why can't we? And I want to and all this. So it was a great conversation. And I think she'll cover a lot of that during the listening session.
Great.
This is on the 14th of September.
I would love to have that flyer so we can circulate it in our own realm of communication as well.
Sure, we can email that out. And, and I think it's a prime time next week. I mean, parents, families, grandparents are typically in, super engaged the first week of school. So they're, they're looking at things and, you know, looking at things coming home. So we'll get that up.
Where there'll be translation at this as well?
Bill is translatable, I believe, that we will have, yeah. So they can do that closed caption.
Were we, weren't we looking into having a different link for Spanish speaking or was that just a suggestion in that?
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, we, we could look into that.
Okay, well, it's so, it's kind of getting late now, but as long as we have something and the agenda and the flyer will be in Spanish, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we're an hour ahead of schedule, Tom. We've got lots of time to talk about this.
We can continue talking about it. That's fine. I, I'm not trying to rush anybody, but.
I think it's, you know, it says, it says a lot about our district that, and I, you know, I know each and every one of us wants to engage with the community in a more meaningful way. And, and it can feel very, it can feel odd for people who attend a board meeting, you know, just sort of the the formality of it. And, you know, so I think it's, and I think what we've seen too is just, just a a, a need to continue to educate the public of what, what the, a school board, what, what they really do and how they function. And it's, it's not like a lot of other elected offices because the board at the end of, once a decision is made, it's communicated with one voice. Whereas, you know, state representatives and senators and congresspersons and they tend to operate more as individuals and boards operate as one functioning body. And, and that's a difficult concept, I think, to, you know, to apply. So and then it's just, you know, opportunities to hear, you know, a dedicated chunk of time just to hear from our community on how we can continue to, to do better for our kids. It's, I'm very, very thankful that we're doing this. And I, I do expect and hope that we continue to, to make a habit out of this. And definitely excited to participate.
Well, I'd like to have it be in person. I think probably with the timing of the meeting at 6:30 and just with the numbers and things that are happening, it's probably best to do virtual for this first one. But I, I'd like to maybe not have that set the precedent for ones going forward so that we could have, you know, hopefully as we can all get back and maybe suggesting if weather or smoke allows it, maybe potentially doing it outside so that we could, because we do have some open spaces here available where we could do something outside. And then I'd also like to maybe suggest that we have the next one already calendared so that there's an expectation and an understanding that we do want to continue this conversation and knowing that we're probably not going to get to everything in this first one.
Maybe that could be done at the retreat.
Well, I would like to maybe have it at the end of that first one, which is the 14th. Like say, our next one is, so in our retreat's the 25th. So I don't know if there's a way to look at that. And maybe it's a something Tuesday or an in between Thursday or something to look ahead to see.
My, my only concern is that you mentioned you would like in person, which I agree, I think in person would be amazing. But if we're going to have Janet continue helping moderated or lead these. OSBA is pretty strict on their travel policies for their staff. And I would imagine if our county numbers are what they are, OSBA would not let a staff member travel here. So I'm, I'm kind of hesitant.
I'm just saying in the future, like six months, that grows. No, it doesn't have to be the next one. I'm just saying in the future, I'd like to try to, you know, get us all together. And I understand it's not the next one. I just don't want to set a virtual only precedent.
Fine, I just wanted to mention that.
I appreciate your clarification.
Because that would be kind of difficult to have in person, all except the moderator there.
And I think there's something, I think it adds a, a level of, kind of takes down a barrier. Because if everyone participating is going to be virtual and we're in this format where, you know, we're seated at a big table versus, you know, you can see each of us and we're sitting there just like everyone else. I think it, it'll be good this first time. But I agree. There's a lot of things I wish were in person right now. And, but I just, yeah, appreciate everyone's enthusiasm for doing this for sure. So.
Yeah, that's something that we want to share on the 14th that, that's, we'll need to get some options out as soon as possible because coordinating dates for the whole board is a challenge.
Yeah, that's it.
And with, and with Janet, what, what were you?
Well, I don't know. Do we want to start quarterly? I mean, I think it would be great to have them more often, but I also know there's a whole lot going on. So, I mean, if we're doing September, that would be October. So then that's like December, which is, that's crazy.
Which is, you almost want to do the first of the year, I would say.
And we can look at it. If it's going to be that far down the road, I think this is a great retreat talk. And then maybe we have all three of them posted later on. That's just one, my suggestion would.
Yeah.
I think we can emphasize our desire to do these, you know, quarterly and that will, you know, be keeping people informed on when the next one is. It's a good idea though, Sarah, because it definitely puts the, puts the emphasis there and, and the reassurance that.
For sure. And we can say we'll have one in January, but we're still working on the date.
Thank you.
Good thought.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion on this before I move on? Okay, sorry, I lost my spot. Thank you very much. License and Classified MOU.
Yeah, we have, similar to last year, we have some health and safety and some MOUs that aren't typically in the CBAs for the classified and the licensed contracts. So we meet with our associations and, and next week, actually, we're going to sit down with our classified staff to continue those discussions. And I hope to have an MOU ready for you to look at for action at our next meeting. We did sit down with license this week and it was very collaborative. We worked off some of the things we had last year. We included some of the other requirements and language for this year based on our current situation. And you have that MOU in your folders and it just, it'll, it seems it'll work. It's not the MOU that we're using for our, the October 18th deadline on the vaccine requirement that we will meet next week to solidify that and have that back for action the following meeting. But I would suggest if the board is willing to look at suspending the rules and move this to action due to starting school next week.
Especially we already have licensed staff in our buildings back this week. So, yeah. Yeah, I would be happy to make that motion. I move that we suspend the rules and move information and discussion item 12, Licensed MOU, to action item number four.
I'll second that.
Okay, Michael moved to suspend the rules and Sarah seconded. We will vote on suspending the rules. Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are now moving this to an action item. Any discussion on it any further before I enter turn a motion to pass the MOU?
I just want to guess, I'll say, just appreciate how collaborative Prussus seems to be and, and the relationship. I think it just talks to the relationship that we have with our, with our licensed staff. And so I'll move that we approve the Licensed and Classified MOU as presented.
Just Licensed.
Oh, I apologize. I'll move that we approve the License. MOU is presented. I apologize. Thank you, Michael, for that clarification.
Well, let's see. It says Licensed and Classified. There are four different spots, so it's not just your fault.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. We will take it to a vote. We'll move this way. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I vote yes. MOU passes. Thank you very much for the hard work.
Yeah, thank you for that.
We're going to go back to Board Policy DBBH Public, oh, we haven't done this one, Public Comment and Board Meetings.
Yeah, this is a policy that has been looked at, our policy. You've seen the old one that was last adopted in 2012. And OSBA has recommended updates for that. We reached out. Thank you, Denise, for getting all these together and sharing this with you today to review, to look at adopting next meeting. And I'll entertain any questions.
I think I have questions, but let me look. I think most of my questions were for the AR. Can we combine them both? Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, well, that's going to be discussion the next time.
Okay, so we'll just move on and, and discuss.
I had a question about the policy. It talks about petitions. Petitions may be accepted at any board meeting.
This, this is actually something that we can discuss the, I mean, the board does not have to necessarily do that. I don't think that we'll get clarification from OSBA, but this is their recommended policy. But I think the board can modify this as they see fit.
I just think it's, would be important to define what a petition is and under what circumstances we consider a petition. So is it?
The first thing that came to mind was when I was first on the board, there were, every spring, there was a group that came to petition to have graduation, not at Luthia Park, to have it back in Phoenix. So when I saw this, that was what immediately came to mind. So that, I would use that as an example.
Yeah, I just wonder if we want to, I don't know, I guess you could really get down a rabbit hole there. But is a petition something brought forward by one person or a group of 50 people or 100 people? Or do you have to have collected 1,000 signatures? Do you have to have collected thousand signatures? What parameters do we put behind a petition? I suppose the policy talks about it being at the discretion of.
And may, and they're the word may accept.
The word may is important. Yeah, okay, well, it's fine.
Rick can maybe help me out. I think we've had like two petitions since I've been on the board. And. Do you remember how many?
No, I really don't. Not very often.
Not very often and, you know, it just depended on, one, I think was about moving graduation.
I thought I remembered two or three about, at least two about moving graduation in the most recent year.
Yeah, and then the spring and so they've been signed by various people and I don't know if. Having a number is.
Nah.
But I don't think that it's been a problem.
Hey, they got their wish.
I did.
Yeah.
Well, and it was part of the consideration when we had the bonds, when we looked at. What we were doing for the bond project because.
All that hard work every year paid off for them. It's great.
I think it was great for staff this year too to have.
Fantastic, yeah.
Graduation.
Yeah, I don't think we need rules or anything on this, just.
Yeah, I like that we're addressing this though. It comes at an important time and provides much needed. Direction and context for the public, so it's good.
Any other comments on this? Okay, we will move on to the AR and as Brent mentioned before, most of the time AR is not discussed, but since this is. What we're going to do, it's appropriate for us to discuss the AR. Any comments on the AR? I can, I have a list, so, and I don't have it very organized, I apologize, but, um. So I guess it's something to think about and I don't think we have the answer for now, but. There was talk about answer a public in the. In there and so my questions would be a kind of like formality and I think it's something we might have to talk about in the board retreat. But like who is going to answer the questions? And just be clear, like. Very careful because when I was talking to Janet, she, and we've mentioned this time, many times during this meeting that the board is one voice and so. Having the board chair answer, some questions are easy peasy. I pretty much know what the whole entire board. Feels like and there's some that are maybe a little bit more. Not knowing. This is something I brought up with Janet at the meeting and she discussed sometimes what boards do. Is if there's questions, then they will discuss it later. At the next meeting under information discussion and then respond that way so that. You're not having. Someone speak for you that isn't. Everyone feels like they have a voice in the one voice that speaks. So this is something that, you know, we would, I would like to learn more, especially if we're gonna have the board chair speak. I. Really want to be thoughtful and not. Speak for someone and then later them say, oh wait, I'm not a hundred percent behind what you said, so. I wouldn't want that. When it's basically policies and stuff with Brent and staff, I feel comfortable with that. They know policies and procedures right, left and sideways, so that's not as much. My other thing was be careful for back and forth conversations. Really clear that we're answering your questions and your comment is done. I know that in the past we have let. Answer people's questions and then they take that as a response and I want to be really clear that if we are doing this. That it doesn't become this open ended conversation back and forth. And we're respectful for everybody and do it fair and do it fairly. So these are the things that also. On the form, I was a little confused about the form. If we wanted to do a signup sheet type or a form and then I would suggest on the form. That we have if you're, if you have a student in our district. So that we can prioritize families or if you are a student in our district. I would like that on the form. Those are my suggestions. Also, another concern I have is that. This policy may be changing in the next couple of months, but if we narrow down what we like, then it will be easy to move it on to the next policy. And then another, my very last concern, I'm sorry for having all these, but is. I didn't see in here and I could be wrong, when we get written comment, there sometimes the public. Will send emails to us as board members. Sometimes they're individual or sometimes we all get them. And how to respond again, we want to respond in one voice. And typically I have been responding to them and sending you out my responses and very, you know. Information based. But I guess it's something is we need to talk about how we want to do that and. Continue what, what kind of information we would like to put in that. Those emails and that's something we can do at the board retreat as well. So I guess my question is, I'm not sure. For our next meeting, we won't have the board retreat by then, but it's something we can always table at that time if we don't feel comfortable. So anyways, those were all my concerns and suggestions. I apologize.
I think the email thing is an important thing to talk about, to address at the listening session and then for us to talk about. At the board retreat because. There's just no, there's no good way for the board to respond. To an email. That, that's appro, that's appropriate for the way that a school board as a governing body functions. Do you, you know? And I think it's important that we educate the public about that, that if you, if you'd like to email something to the entire board. It really should then go like we have been doing with most of emails that we get. Goes as a public comment. For the record and I think that's a good way to do it and, and anyway, but yeah, good topic for retreat.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think we really need to clarify that on what, what is a written citizen comment? And I think if we clarify, if you want a written official citizen comment, you email Denise Skinner. And really clarify that on policy, because if it's to one of us, it's not necessarily official citizen comment. So I think that'll help hopefully clarify.
Yeah.
If they want that under a public record.
Right.
And that's mostly what I've been asking them when they've been emailing, do you want this as a public comment? Because again, I feel like that. Some people are following the rules or following what they feel like is the rules. And they're not getting a response back from the board and others are, so I wanted to be really careful when responding. Because it wouldn't be fair if someone submitted a public comment through Denise, but then did it through us and they got more interaction. So I think. We'll talk about. Educating our public and I think the listening session will be a start, but we'll have to continue that. Cause we, we want it to be, yeah, we don't want to break any rules and want it to be fair.
In my experience. Ninety-nine percent of emails to a school board are really best answered by staff. Whether that's Brent or one of his designees. It's usually about something that has to do with the day to day operation of the district and. Sometimes there's policy related. We got a very thoughtful email from. Mister Luz this evening, that's was a policy related email, but. By and large, it's usually something that staff can address, so yeah, lots to work through there and, you know, I think. I just, I'm glad these things are coming to light because it's an opportunity to. You know, have a dialogue with the community about, you know, the, the best way for us to serve them and. To, to serve kids and so it's good. This is, this is good. These are good things. And I look forward to whether it's the listening session or retreat and through these policies. The opportunity to clarify some of these, I think, what feel like gray areas to the public and possibly us as well. So it's good.
And just to clarify, a lot of times we've been talking about the retreat and the way I vision it and we can talk about it later is that we'll kind of like a recipe. We get all the ingredients and then we'll bring it back. So talking, if we talk about the retreat on public input. We will also bring that back to a future board meeting and discuss that in the public. Because no decisions can be made at a board retreat, but a lot of the things from that board retreat, the public will be seeing in the next. Probably the next three or four board meetings or more, so I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Any other discussion on?
So we would be voting on this next meeting and potentially, and that's after our board retreat?
No, it's before.
Before, so should we?
I might suggest we make some. Changes to what we saw as the recommendations and if the board is not ready, when we put it on for action, if the board's not ready to adopt it, at that time, we can table it. For the next time.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on to board policy KD, public participation, wait, sorry. Moving on to KG, community use of, of district facilities.
No, it was, it was KD.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Cause it is a policy and speaking of coming to light, this policy is from the dark ages of nineteen eighty-three. And the OSBA is recommending that we delete this policy. It's no longer. A relevant policy based on our others, so. When we were getting advice and clarification from OSBA on some other public comment policies. We asked about KD and they recommend deleting that, so that's what we'll present next, next meeting.
Speaking of updating and deleting policies, is that still tabled with OSBA until, or where are we in that?
We, we, we have a contract with the policy update, right, to look through all of our policies. They do have some people. We got in at a good time, but it's going to take some time and it's a long process, so once we meet with OSBA, we can. Try to get some information to say, hey, we want to, we want to start with these policies to be updated. And then they'll just have a process to update every policy and do it as we've done it here with information discussion and. Approve it, but it'll be quite a number each time. Yeah, good question.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to policy KG, community use of district facilities.
Yeah, this is, John's worked hard on this with his team and his staff to hopefully clarify. This is something that has been long overdue and this will help communicate to not only. Our staff in our buildings, but the public on being able to use our facilities, so.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Who is our facilities director?
It's John McHale, yeah.
It seems like a natural tie into giving him additional.
It's, uh, they're starting to add up for a little bit. I think he's still on, but. There, there is one clarification and I think it was brought up about, we do, it, it says on here that leashed. Dogs on a leash are allowed. We have, we've had stopped that for now. We posted signs and. Not allowing animals on our. Facilities. I know sometimes that's tough to. Tough to manage, but that's something we could look at. We could keep the language there. Or make it reflect our current practice.
While, while we've been sitting here, there's people out here walking their dogs and picking up after them in a little place. I don't know if that's included or not, but.
Better go and tell them.
They need to fill out this form and.
Yeah, exactly.
That'll be twenty-five dollars.
Sorry, John. Go ahead.
I can talk. A couple of years ago, we decided, the board, actually, it was at a board meeting, decided to not allow dogs. And I just wanted, I didn't catch that. When I looked at the, at the AR, but. Wanted to remind everybody that we had several instances, even though we had signage that said you had to have your animal leased. Where dogs were not leased and, you know, during events jumped on kids and we had several complaints and then. In all honesty, even now. People still go on to the properties and don't clean up after their pets. It's been an ongoing problem. So I'm not sure that I would encourage changing it, but of course that's up to you.
If we would want to keep our current policy, we would just make, I think it's in the policy and on the AR about. And just take out other than leashed dogs, we would just take that out.
This applies to the Culver property as well, is that correct? I see a lot of people have their animals there.
And it's posted that they're not, I mean, like parked right in front of the sign.
How do you enforce that?
Yeah.
The, the thing is.
We have staff, I know, I mean, I know John's parked is, uh, stopped and did that and just say, hey, go over there. We haven't, you know, called the county and said, hey, can you come? Reiterate that for us, but we do, we do have some. You know, it, it has been reduced though. I mean, I know we had a, a lot on our facilities about. You know, really just a, a lot of, you know. Stepping in some stuff that you didn't want to step in as a fifth grader out on the playground and then bringing it into the classroom, so. It has been, it has been better, so. We could maybe get a solar panel deal like the stop sign we have on Fourth and Rose. Blinks to maybe reiterate that. But John, thank you for your work on this and clarifying it and all the work you've done and research. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the AR? Okay, so policy KG AR. Facilities, any questions on that? I had a few. One is on the first page, it moved it from. Superintendent to facilities person, director. And then when you talk about Culver Fields and then they sign the agreement with Culver Fields, it says superintendent. And I'm wondering if facilities. Director would be better, especially when it's talking about changing the water system and, and the time and all that, that would be something that. I feel like John would be. Would want to know about.
So you're talking about item three on page two?
Well, I'm talking about, I think it's mentioned several times throughout the pages.
Oh yeah, electrical.
So on page two six, it talks about herbicides and pesticides. And then it says talk to the superintendent and I feel like that would be more of. John or the facilities and then seven is pruning or altering shrubbery. I mean, I'm just. I, I'm just not sure and then. Modifications in any, to the electrical system and there was something about watering. I was just questioning what, what would be more beneficial if they went to Brent or they went to the facilities director on the first page. It talks about facilities, so I was just trying to, one. Make it more, you know, consistent and two, wondering, you know, I didn't want them to talk to Brent and then. And go, I gotta talk to John or whatever. I just wanted to make it easier for everybody.
We'll, we'll, we can look at that and see what fits best and we can certainly look at doing facilities director or designee. So yeah, we'll, we'll bring back what we recommend next time.
This is the AR, this is the AR, right?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
True. True.
Right, it's up to you, I just was.
Yeah, okay.
Does the superintendent of the year wanna be talking, dealing with weeds?
As long as he can't designate me to do some of these things, I say it's a facility director.
That was just my, yeah.
It makes more sense on that, yeah.
Oh yeah, I wasn't telling.
He can designate me if I get to use the weed flamethrower, yes.
Yeah, and it's more consistent based on the front page too, so.
Yeah. And then on one six, this is just a five C, it says food shall be prepared and or served in the school cafeteria is only be school-related groups. That just seemed right, I was assuming it would be by school groups.
Five C on page one of the AR will make that change to food shall be prepared and or served in school cafeterias only by school-related, by school-related groups profits will be used to benefit students. Got it?
And then my last question is just clarifying as well. It talks about, and I don't, if the group is 100% proceeds go to the students, then it would be no charge. And I just wanted to make sure the alumni group, I know sometimes they use our facilities and I wanna make sure that they would still be able to at no charge.
That would, that would, they'd be a qualification, yeah.
Those were all my questions, sorry for so many questions tonight.
Channeling your inner Lori there, proud of you, she'd be proud of you.
I haven't seen her in a long time either. Okay, anything else, okay, moving on to the next agenda, let me find it real quick.
I don't feel like there's enough on here.
On the next agenda, well, this one, I apologize, is gone, actually, we're doing good, so the next agenda would be accentuate the positive, citizens' comments, superintendent report, consent agenda, the board's policies we just talked about, public comment at boards, public participation at board meetings, delete that. It doesn't look like the AR for BDDH is on the agenda, but I assume that it will be. Community use of facilities and I'm assuming that AR appoint the budget committee applicants and then adopt the budget calendar, then for information discussion, we will have facilities in bond, financial legislation, OSBA, Almeida Fire, diversity, equity, inclusion, enrollment report, I look forward to that and that is all, it's a small next agenda item.
Yeah, and I wanna clarify that, you just have to review the handbook for the staff, it's not, it's not an actionable deal, so I misspoke earlier.
So not to add more time to this, but do we want to add an information discussion about the board retreat on here? And this will be.
That's after the listening session when they have something.
I'm gonna say, and this is after the listening session, do we wanna add something about listening session recap?
Why don't we add both those to information discussion, the board retreat and listening session report?
Sorry Denise, it just popped into my head right now, I'm, my brain is working in overtime, anything else? Hearing none, thank you very much for a great meeting, thank you that, for those that stayed online and have a nice evening.
Thank you.